Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the January 6th, 2022, meeting of the Dyson Public Library Board of Trustees. Meeting is being recorded. It's a hybrid meeting, in person and Zoom. The meeting is being recorded. And that's all I need to say? Okay. Should have a script, because I know there's one. But so the first thing is, because it is a remote and in-person meeting, we have two members of the trustees. Just as participating remotely, we will do our votes by roll call. And so we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Ron O'Connor, Chair of the Dyson Public Library Board of Trustees.
Eve Cabral.
Rita Arusho, trustee.
Jocelyn Tavarez, Library Director. And we do have a guest with us tonight.
Zach LaPointe, Chair of the Friends of the Library. Hi, Zach. Happy New Year. Happy New Year to everybody. All right. First item on the agenda are the minutes of the December 2nd, 2021 meeting for trustees. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I can make a motion, Eve Cabral, to approve the minutes from December 2nd.
And a second?
I second Rita Arusho.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? All right.
No.
Okay. Then we'll put it to a vote. Minutes of the December 2nd meeting, Ron O'Connor, I.
Eve Cabral, I.
Rita Arusho, I.
Minutes are approved. Old business, updates on library operations. Jocelyn?
Here at Town Hall, things are moving along. We added the cart, which is behind you, so that we have more picture books available for kids. Lori is still doing top time and the preschool storytime, we're still offering that. I talked to Lori about COVID and she's going to continue because it's a manageable group of children who are coming. They're almost, especially the toddlers, they are recognizing each other. They're just starting to interact and she doesn't want to upset the balance. They are maintaining social distance as best they can, the parents especially. And, you know, we're just waiting for additional guidance from the town. So we're gonna, as long as parents feel comfortable coming, those programming options are available to them unless this board feels otherwise. The only other program that we will have in person, and I might make it hybrid, would be our book group. The modular unit. We have some temporary two-by-two little beams holding up shelves right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we had some shifting bookcases in the modular. So the highway department is working with us, but we ran into holidays and now a snow event tomorrow. So the best time they can work on that is a Friday and we're just not having any luck.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
So is the, did the modular shift? Is that? Don't know.
Really? No. I don't know.
Okay. All right.
And that's, but other than that, we're doing the best we can.
Yeah. It was appreciated by the trustees and appreciated by patrons, I'm sure, as well. You're under less than ideal circumstances. Capital outlay request?
So they have invited departments to attend two meetings. Then invitation for the library to attend both of them. One of them is Tuesday, January 18th at 7:00. The other is Tuesday, February 1st at 5:45. So I will obviously be in attendance there. I don't know if we were intended to go to both. I feel like a department head, we were named in the first meeting and maybe it's a case where we'll try to do as much as they can. I don't know, but that's what I know.
So you'll go to the first one and if needed, you can go to the second?
I, that's what I expect.
Okay.
We did, we did put two items before them. The feasibility study and what happens after the modular, you know, a more secure temporary spot. So.
Okay. That sounds good. Well, so we'll see what happens, comes out of that.
Right.
Yeah. Do you need a trustee at that or is this is for department heads?
They are calling it department heads, but I don't know how many department heads have a board that governs
Oh, I see.
the department like you do.
I see. Right. Well, you know, we're I'm certainly fine with you going, but if you think it's going without a trustee, but if you think yeah, I'm happy to attend or go to the first one and say you need me at the second, whatever.
It probably makes sense to have at least one. But that's up to the three of you then.
Yeah, I think even just for optics, it's not your need to have someone else there. I think it's more all the trustees are present for this discussion. It's probably the good reason to be there. So that's the 18th at 7:00?
Yeah, that's a Tuesday. They're both Tuesdays.
All right.
All I do, I just need to know if we have more than one representative on the board. I need to post it as a meeting.
So would Eve or Rita, would either of you like to attend?
I can attend. I can attend. It's at 7:00. I'm definitely available at 7:00.
Okay. And the other one is at 5:45?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if it's, if it's important to attend both?
I'm planning to. I would expect we would know more the first, after the first night.
I meant to have the same board member attend both.
Oh.
So Eve, can you do both?
Once, the one at 5:45, what day is that one?
That's on a Tuesday.
Also a Tuesday. So the 18th and what's the date on the other?
February 1st.
February 1st. And that's a Tuesday. Yeah, I can do both of those dates. I'm trying to think with staff meetings, those don't, don't reckon, they don't, that's mine. That'll be fine.
If it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, I can do it. But even if, you know, you end up doing one, I do the other. I just think there might be value in continuity. That's all.
And there might not even be anything beyond the 18th if they're satisfied.
Sure.
Those are
Yeah.
And if you get if you get stuck, I can, I can do it. Just let me know.
Okay.
Well, and we can, we can all attend.
Right.
You know, if that, you to post it. So if it turns out, Jocelyn, the more you hear about it, that the 18th, that's still, you know, that's the week after next. I mean, if you hear it and you hear more and you think we should all be there, we can, you know, as many of us as possible.
Post it to cover
Yeah.
our leases and then
Then we can, as we get closer and we determine it probably in best interest for you to have us all there. I don't, I don't think so, but we'll see. Okay. Anything else about that?
No.
Okay. The Board of Library Commissioners, is it?
We're looking into February now.
Okay.
It's just based on their scheduling.
Sure.
So that could be posted if we can land a date.
Sure. Hotspot devices update?
We've been asked to get the hotspots working and in use by January 31st. Obviously, hope, you know, then it's not. I've been trying to work with there to establish an account and work with sales to help us with the billing. And because this is a reimbursement program with the federal government, I can't get a bill from them directly. So it's like putting stuff on a credit card and sale, you know, sales can act in that regard.
Okay.
But there's just, it hasn't been an easy, it feels like it should be easy. You know, I'm still working on the sales tax exemptions and so I'm hoping to make that January 31st date. But we gotta, if we have to put them out sooner without having everything that I intended, then I'll do that and then we'll back around and
So is that January 31st? Is that a requirement?
I don't know if it was requirement or preference. I'll go back and look and explain, see how big of an issue it is.
Eve or Rita, any questions about that?
No.
All right, new business. Statistics.
I'm going to share the screen. Can you see it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. December. It's interesting. We had a lot of online use for some items. But at the same time, there are other things that weren't getting used. So I don't know if there's anything in particular you would like to see.
Well.
For the electronic resources. Universal class really jumped up.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
I think, you know, when someone is concentrating on a class, then it's every time that they do something with it.
The free goal streaming. That jump could just be one or two people, right? Just or is it, is there, is there a cap on the streaming? I know there is on the download.
Three hours a week, I think. So I'm, I expect some of that with like Christmas music. I can actually
Yeah, sure. Compared with last year, I was
I can check to see what genres of music were represented as well.
Oh, I see. Sure.
And then for, we had a little bit of a dip from last year at this time with our in-person checkout.
Yeah, I wonder. I'm just wondering if it has to do with a holiday falling on a Saturday?
That, I think that
Because we're closed both Friday and Saturday, right?
And being here, we were, we did lose days because of we followed the Town Hall schedule.
So you might have had a couple, a couple of days fewer than last year.
Exactly, yeah.
That's all it takes. It's a 7%.
I think that's a good point.
So likely, just if you're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, I bet the circulation would be better.
We're online. That's our online library.
We are, Ron. We are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All right.
So
Yeah, that's fine.
Considering all the changes, though, that's, you know, not bad. It's not like people stopped altogether. It went really down, so that's good.
Right, right. I don't know if there's anything else. This is the 2022 one. Let me So it follows the same basic pattern
Yeah.
of, you know, the line that we see throughout the year, which is always interesting.
It is. You can't, you can't move the curve. Okay. Anything else about statistics?
Do you have any questions?
Always, always good to see this, though. It gets, you know, be part of a conversation about how things are going. It's good to see the electronic resources being used. And okay. Next is payroll and bills.
I, this week, it was really, the bills were a lot of materials, a lot of materials are trickling in. The publishing industry is having their own supply chain issues with paper and cardboard for the bindings and so things that we ordered a few months ago are, you know, trickling in, you know, a few at a time. So there's a lot of that and ordered some supplies. We used to, with one of our vendors, they would send the items processed to save us time. But now because of the supply chain issues, we found that that was actually slowing down the time that we get material. So we're doing more processing in-house. And that's pretty much it. Our
What is the tape?
That's where we buy our DVDs. It's also the supplier of Hoopla.
Just an observation that there's a company that did not change its name. They probably don't have tapes anymore.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
All right, I'll say, I divide these up with you folks, but I'll sign them, I'll sign them after. All right. Collection development policy.
I I worked on that. And it was time. It was, it's been a while since it's been looked at. And there's a lot. There's been a lot of guidance regarding collection development and the items that should be included in the policy that we didn't have the first, our last go at it in 2017. And I also went back and looked to see if I was even remotely near my goals. And this was actually one of my goals. So I said, I better get on it. I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at it. Basically, they recommended adding the Dyson Library Commission statement to the policy. Oh, excuse me. We added some verbiage about the library bill of rights, which basically says we're not going to get in the way of someone's right to read and choose their own materials. That not every item in the library is going to make every library user happy. In that we only really care about when we remove items from the collection, it's for practical considerations like space damage, something's out of date. You know, the whole Pluto isn't a planet anymore thing, those kinds of issues that are proper. Just to be clear about, they wanted clarity on responsibility for selection, which we kind of had. We, our selection guidance was, was pretty good. We've already, you know, included that. We just added that the library attempts to represent all sides of controversial issues as far as availability of space, materials and budget allows. But the selection is based on the criteria that we listed above in the bullet points. We went out of our way to say that we don't endorse any item just because it's in the collection, that if someone doesn't agree with an item being in the collection, it's not an automatic removal from the collection. There is a process that needs, that would be followed to make that determination.
I think the key message here is that additions or subtractions to the collection are not at the whim of staff or the trustees based on their own personal
Right.
political or religious or whatever position in the
There's enough to the magnet.
You know, and your, your statement about the a library this size can't possibly have everything possible, but if it's not here, it's possibly elsewhere in the network.
And they'll get it for you.
And we'll get it for them. So I think that's, that's clear. This is, there's this section here that I wasn't sure. It's on page three at the top where it says, "All public libraries contain materials that that some patrons may find objectionable. Libraries may omit from the collection materials that some patrons feel are important. In either case, the library has procedures for that patrons may use requesting." Is that second sentence? Do we need to say here? Libraries may omit. I think you made the point that things removed from the collection either because it would run out of space or we're refreshing the collection, I think. I'm just not sure about that statement, whether, and I, you know, welcome even Rita, just comment on that. Does that somehow imply that we're making or is that refirst out, you know, how are we making that decision to omit? That's, that's my only concern about what that says.
We kind of talk about it in the
Before that.
Development of the collection.
Yeah.
That I mean, I can get more clarity on items that are removed in weeding.
I think it's the word omit and maybe I'm misinterpreting that to feel that it's, it's an intentional thing, but as opposed to yeah, no, it's, I'll take it back. I think when you say omit.
It covers both items we may not purchase and items that we would withdraw.
Is it better, is it softer? And this is libraries in general, so it's not us. Is it softer to say may not include?
But then it doesn't cover the
Yeah.
the withdrawal.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I can find a different word for that.
I think, I think if it's, if either Eve or Rita reacted to that, I, I did. Only, and only just because it sounded like it was a
A little harsh.
Not harsh. It was just an act to remove. But I see now omit could also mean just choose not to add to the collection. In either case, omit, it's, it's supported by the criteria that we've already established.
I can also find it.
But it's in general, it's libraries in general. You're just making a statement about this is how it works. Yeah, it's fine. Most people aren't going to read it that well, anyway. Yeah, it's tricky because if you try to work something too much, then you kind of, it's fine. This is yeah, it's fine. When it says that either case, the library has procedures that patrons may use in requesting. Is that, is that, is that referring to the Dyson Public Library has procedures or that libraries in general have procedures?
That we do. But I want to add that we have procedures that patrons may use for requesting materials as well as reconsideration.
Okay. Well, I think, I think all of that is clear, that this is a process and it's not guided in any way by any preferences that are it's guided a lot by the criteria that are there. And a small-sized library just doesn't have the capacity to have every single thing and we're not we're not excluding based on any criteria other than those that are stated here.
All right. I added our special collections, which is really the local history.
Yeah.
With a small
Sure.
And then I tightened up reconsideration. And reiterated the, the board's authority to give me the authority to maintain the collection. And the only thing I highlighted was this is something we haven't practiced. I think and it's just because it gets overlooked. I don't know. We, we were very ambitious when we did this the first time to vote, to renew, to look at this every year. And I just wanted to get the board's feelings on how often you'd like to review it or
Yeah, I can we have?
Just throwing that other, sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I was just thinking, is this something that other libraries do every year?
I don't think, I haven't examples of it being done every year. I think in reality, we all probably address policies reactively rather than proactively. Just because of the way life is and I think it's like we were on a little bit of a roll a few years ago with reviewing policies and then other things took precedence. So we can certainly turn back to that because it's been a while on.
Don't we have, I thought we had a tracking document that
We do.
said where, you know, where they are and I
I don't know that. That's
Yeah.
left that in a little bit.
Right.
This wording is, I'm just looking at it, it just says that it's only to renew the authority to, to allow you to dispose of property. So do we really need to look at that every year?
I, I don't know. I don't think it does. I don't know where we got that language or, I don't remember.
I could see upon like a new director or something, but I mean, the director is really the person who's going to be in charge of it unless something changes, but
Which is, yeah. Are you saying that we would Are you saying that we would vote to renew the authority to dispose of property? Or is it renewed?
Oh, maybe that's what it is, yeah.
That's what it is. It's just to renew the
Responsible.
To, yeah.
You might have been told to put that in there, actually.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking it's just for that. It's not to use the whole policy.
All right, so I should make that mark here.
Or something that
Yeah, I think that would be something that just
Once that annually, now recalling, yes, that's what it was, not, not the entire policy.
Just the authority, yeah.
So I can, I can clear up that language, so we're not asking in another two years what it means. But, oh.
I'm in a meeting.
So I can tighten that language, so it's a little more clear. So I didn't know if you wanted to
You could if, if, I don't think it's worth the trouble, but if, you know, if you could trace it back and say that, or you could use the data, I'm just saying you could say, you know, the if you find a meeting in which we voted to do that, you could just reference that, that is what, you get the idea. It's like, so it's not out of nowhere, you could put, you know, at the October 2015 meeting of the trustees, the trustees voted to whatever.
So I don't know if you are interested in voting on this portion tonight, or if you want to take it back and digest it a little more.
Well, we can, let's, let's start with a motion and then we can, and we've already had some discussion, but then we can see if we want to table it, just so we have for the record. So if we have a motion to approve the is we have a collection development policy?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Rita.
All right, so is there any, any discussion? I know we've already had some, we probably should have started with the motion, but is there any other discussion including whether we want to vote on this this evening? Are we okay with it as drafted?
I just want to add, the staff has reviewed it and are comfortable with it as well. I just wanted to make that.
My observation is that this is a staff function that's well managed and that the trustees don't get involved in this, this policy, you know, you the record would show that you're not coming to the trustees and saying, should we get this book, should we get that book, should we take this book out, should we take that book out? So it's really not a trustee's function that we entrust that to the staff we have for, for many years. There's nothing in these changes to the to the policy that concern me, so. Let me just move it to a vote.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so take a roll call vote, start with Eve.
I vote to approve.
You can roll. Yes, Rita?
Rita Russo, yes. I vote yes.
And Ronna Pana, yes. So the policy is approved.
Thank you.
With the understanding that we can always come back to it at some time, there's nothing, you know, if someone should see something in this that they want us to consider. The trustees are always open to reviewing policies. But I think it's, it works fine.
Similarly, part and parcel with the collection development policy is I wanted to tighten up the language for reconsideration. The actual process that every patron had an issue with an item in the collection that we do have a formal process to go through and this is what you do. And this is how we look at those types of requests. And so I wanted to make that clear as well. This is basically just a repeat of what is in the collection development policy right at the top. It's the procedure that is new. We're basically
I see.
Usually when someone shares a concern with an item that's in the collection, it starts with a discussion to the staff member. And that staff person explains the rationale for the item in the collection. Or especially in the youth services area where most items are challenged. That staff person will talk about having that person will recommend that for young children, a parent should be involved in selection, and if they don't feel like that item is appropriate for their child, we respect, the library respects that decision for them. But it is not in our mission to restrict them of choice from anyone else. For older kids, that staff person would suggest reading the item along with the child or completely taking that responsibility or working with their child on choosing the books that they feel are more aligned with their family's backs or what have you. On reading the book along with the child. So again, the position of the library is to allow people's freedom to select their materials so that we haven't gotten to this stage where there's a formal complaint. I think since I've been here, and I've been here for a long time now, but this is the, the background and we want their concern in writing.
Yeah.
We will meet with the relevant library staff to determine if there's a violation of our material selection policy.
Okay.
We will take a further look to see if there are certain things that have changed and do they still fit currently in the selection policy. I will let the board know about our decisions in your form.
Okay.
I will respond to the library user in writing of the decision. If they wish to appeal that decision, we will put their concern as agenda of the board of trustees and invite them to the meeting. And then you can reconsider the decision based on whether
There's some language there that seems awkward.
Okay.
I didn't, right, are you seeing that too?
No, I don't, I don't know because I looked at it too much.
Okay. Number seven. Based on whether or not the particular item conforms to the
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Conforms to the
This is, this is something we looked at in 2014, I'm not just catching.
No, 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 this is new.
Oh, this is new. Oh, I see. Okay, all right.
And that the trustees make the final determination. So it just defines what a library user can expect in this process.
Okay.
And we don't we don't remove books or items from the collection based on their merit, but we will look at if it follows our policy and if we follow our policy and and this is what is said on the form procedure. We want to know if they are a DITN library cardholder, or at least a sales library cardholder. We want to know if they are representing themselves or if they are representing an organization. And if they are, which organization is it? We want to know how they came across the item in question. We want to know if they read the entire resource and if not, was there a particular section or if there was a particular section that initiated the concern? What their concerns are. If they have an alternative source that they would recommend. And I think that's a useful question because if you don't have that balance in the collection, that can be helpful. And we want to know what they'd like us to do to solve their concern. If it's a matter of removing the item completely or maybe putting this material and removing it from children and maybe it belongs in teens. Or maybe that teen book should be shared with adults. So those are the types of things that we would be looking for there. And that's a thought. I don't know if you want to take that.
Yeah, Eve or Rita, do you have any comments? I've got a couple, but I want to give you both a chance before I
Just, I'm just looking it over.
I guess one question is, can, can we act on this tonight? If it's not explicitly on the agenda, are you saying it just falls naturally from the collection policy?
I think it, I was under the assumption it would fall naturally, but if you want to wait until it's spelled out, then I'm comfortable with that. We can put that, that specific piece on for February.
Okay.
Only because the collection policy does reference the form.
Right, got it. Yeah, that's what you put it here on the, on the back and that's, the language is the same.
But I'm comfortable, you know, I, I don't have a problem with waiting just for that safety.
Yeah, it's have it posted. Have it posted on the agenda. We can talk about it now and then we can decide whether we want to vote or whether it's worth, but so I'm, so I'll just turn it back to Eve or Rita for comments. Mine was minor.
I don't see anything. I think it looks pretty good to me.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, I just said, well, I had two. One, the last item. It says, what actually are you considering for the committee to consider? Is it the trustees you mean? Or is there separate trustees?
The staff, library staff first.
So that's a committee?
Yeah, that would be a committee, but I can, I can
I missed that reference, yeah.
More clear.
It's probably in here, I just missed that. Oh yeah, here is the committee.
References at above, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I just missed that. And so the only other thing is about the library card thing. Is there is there, you know, what's, what's the reason for asking that? I mean, there may be a good one, what, do we need the library card number? And probably when I read that, I said, is somebody going to say, oh, well, they're just going to look up my my history as a library user and
We don't keep history.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I didn't think we did, so we're not able to do that, but
Patrons can opt in, but
Yeah, but
We don't check anybody's history.
But patron may not know that.
No.
So I guess what was it, so why do we need the number? I'm thinking from the standpoint that I, I know issues with it, it's just like, could, could somebody who's filling this out say, well, why do they need my library number? My card number?
So we, basically we can verify that they do have a card with us, I think.
And that by having the they're a different status in terms of reconsideration. So somebody just comes out of nowhere and say, I'm going to all libraries, all over the region, and I'm going to make sure that you take this book out as opposed to I live in this town and I have a concern as a member of the town.
I'm a library user in the town. I was really upset by finding this book on the shelf.
Yeah, and I think that's
I don't think it's appropriate for the town library to have it versus someone in California.
Yeah.
Complaining about something that we have here or don't have here or
Sure.
So it's a distinction, I, I think.
And providing the card number allows you to look that up and say, okay, this is legitimately
We would, and I want to be clear, we would treat the concern the same way.
Okay.
It's not to differentiate that, but we want to know if there's someone with a vested interest versus, or another interest. That's all.
Sure. All right, then it's fine. It's fine with me. I just saw that and I want to make sure we had a make sense. And somebody could represent themselves and an organization?
I would think so.
Yeah, so it says or, so I just wonder if we could put
And, or, or just take the or out.
Take the or out. Yeah, and it's just minor points. I think overall, it's, it's, it's fine. And then the main question is whether this whether we're okay voting on it if it's not explicitly on the agenda.
I, I think
You think it's, I think you're, you know, you're right that it's in, it's not a totally different policy.
It could be challenged. I can see that too. So I, you know, I can I can name it specifically on the next agenda, just to that the items across the piece.
What I'm looking for, is there a way that we can, that this becomes an addendum to this policy rather than a separate policy? Or does it need to be?
I don't know.
Yeah. Eve and Rita?
Well, when I, if someone has, and maybe I should say this in reconsideration, that we would give them all the materials that they need. So we would give them a copy of our policy and so maybe I should, I should change that anyway to say that they will be given a copy of our policy so that they know. I don't know if I do say that.
Well, it says it in here. Right? We'll discuss the material selection policy. Were you talking about the reconsideration policy?
The actual material selection and how we go about it.
Well, it says, yeah, I mean, the simplest language, the first, as you said earlier, the first three paragraphs.
Come right from there.
Come right from yeah. You know, this is really the reconsideration. policy and procedure is really just an extension of
Yeah, I agree.
Of the collection policy. And it's really, it's essentially restating everything that's here, that's in what we just voted on, and the main thing is the form.
Right.
So I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with this isn't entirely different, it's not an entirely different policy, so I, I'm fine with voting on it tonight. If you want, you know, if we want to clean it up a little bit, I don't think it needs, I think, I think it's fine. They just have to go together, I think.
Yeah.
Vote on them separately, it does keep them as a, keep it as a standalone, keep it as a standalone document, so we can review them separately. But ultimately, next time we look at one, we're going to look at the other anyway.
Right.
They stay together. We don't number our policies, do we? Yeah. Because this would be like five A and B, if we did.
Right, alright.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Did, did we have a motion on this one? Yeah, I can't remember.
There's no, because it's a discussion.
Yeah, we just have a discussion whether to move it right. Do you have a motion to approve the reconsideration of library materials, policy and procedure?
I make a motion that we consider I can't remember what all you said, but I make the motion.
Just to approve, approve the reconsideration, reconsideration of library materials, policy and procedure. So Rita, Rita Russo made the motion. Do I have a second, Eve?
Uh, second, yes.
Um, any further discussion? Okay, we'll put it to a vote. On favor, uh, Eve?
I.
Rita?
I.
And Ronald Connor, I. Okay, it's approved?
Thank you.
Thank you. Checked a couple off your list, Jocelyn, that's good. Thank you for doing those.
Alright.
And, and I, I think, you know, e- either one, when they're out there in practice, and if we get feedback from people, the, the staff and trustees are always willing to review them. Okay. On the agenda is the FY twenty-three budget.
Okay, um. I'm bringing this to you tonight because the town administrator and the town accountant would like to have the budget request submitted by January thirty-first. And tonight is where our meeting went on.
Sure, yeah.
We are and of course, um as the body that oversees the library, it requires a vote
Okay.
by the trustees. We were asked to have a level funded expense budget. There are contractual increases in the salaries. And I do have a request, a salary request for the five-one-oh-seven salary paid line. So this year, the contractual increase, just to go back, is two point five percent. So all the full-time staff will be um, having two point five percent. I have a few things going on that with the salary page line, that I'd like to get your approval on. Or recommend to you what I think should happen. First of all, that position, as of January first, we were just a few cents away for, um, just to give you that, the heads up, for making the minimum wage in Massachusetts. So I reckon, I would like to have that two point five percent increase extend to all employees, including the part-time. And that, the two point five percent is based on that minimum wage amount. I would also, given that we're a little more challenged with staffing in two locations, and the part-time person is primarily working at the Tahoe location. I'd like to have the weekly hours, the estimated hours that she works, at fifteen hours. Right now, it's between ten and twelve. I think, um, it would really be helpful to increase the hours. Right now, they are scheduled to work on Monday night and Saturday. Having a little bit ex, of extra hours would give wiggle room for the full-time staff who have to work Saturday. Or especially if they're here, or vacations, illness. Any number of things that can happen, the personal time, unexpected things that happen in life. That is part of it. The other part is, I'm asking if we can also fund a substitute librarian. Or staff person to call on when you're really stretched. And I estimate, this number reflects eight hours a month. And it's more like a cautionary.
So we're not obligated to the eight hours a month, it's just a
It's just a budgetary purpose to try to put a dollar on.
It's a contingency type, yeah.
And I don't know, I mean, I would expect there are some months we need it and some we don't, but trying to cover the two locations is gonna be difficult and
Would it getting into too much, but would it, would it roll over if you didn't use eight hours one month? Could we?
Oh, no, that would, yeah.
Yeah, so you could say, oh, okay, we didn't use any in January, so we can, we need somebody for sixteen hours.
Right.
We could do that. So it's, it's kept it we kept it ninety-six hours a year. To be, and, and to be used at the discretion of the director, as opposed to, you know, because you could use somebody for twelve.
Right.
You get my point. I think, I just don't want town meeting or the finance committee to, I think it's like ninety-six hours a year.
I was, I was nervous with ten hours, because it, I felt like it pushed the budget up a little too much, but eight could be a couple of four-hour shifts, or with the recognition that we wouldn't be, probably not using all ninety-six hours.
Yeah, is it is there a minimum number of hours that someone would have to work? You said four, and that just clicked with me that some in some spaces, it's like if you bring anybody
The contract specifies three.
Okay.
So that would be the minimum.
I, I think it's a purpose, that's, that's, so I'm just getting into the numbers and, and operationalizing it, but I, I think it makes good sense. To have, to be able to call upon somebody to maybe it's not substitute, maybe it's a different a different word. Substitute says maybe filling in for somebody when
But like, that's how I think of this.
So this would be somebody filling in, as opposed to, we've got some extraordinary need, something big happening, we need somebody to help us. This would be somebody who's not available, filling in, okay, so substitute.
Oh, my gosh, we are all sick.
Yeah, no.
There's only one person left.
Yeah.
So that's
Okay, so it's substitute, it's like a, like a substitute teacher kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's my intent.
Not a, not bring somebody in because we've got a big project, because that really happens right now.
No, no. Not for this role.
Yeah. Is a hundred hours a good number, like annually?
Can you round it to a hundred?
I could do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking the eight hours per month, it kind of locks us into
Exactly.
You, you go through that hundred, you go through that hundred hours in two or three months. And then it's gone, but at least you've, but then you need that.
Right.
Yeah, it's the eight hours a month, seems maybe restrictive in a way that we didn't have intended.
Okay.
I agree, I agree, I'm thinking the same thing.
Is it a dollar amount, but you're kind of fixed in what the hourly rate is, right?
I, well I would think it would be at least the same amount as the other part-time position.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I was, that's what I was going for, but I guess it could be less, it could be the minimum.
Yeah, I don't, I know that that matters, I think it's just, I think it's, in the end, it's going to be the dollar amount.
Right.
And how it's administered, I think you want to, you want to give yourself as much flexibility.
Yeah, I was just planning to, I, I didn't know how else to quantify it.
Yeah.
And technically, I mean, if we needed it, if it really, God forbid, we get into any real trouble. We are allowed to use the state aid money to supplement it, if we needed it. If we needed it, and then it would give us something to work, like we would have a better plan for following years, on if this was realistic or not.
Yeah, I mean, may not use it, I mean, never need to use it. This is, so I think this is helpful. It's only once somebody is out, you've got to fill in.
Right.
Not, hey, you know what, we're, we're exhausted, let's bring somebody in to help us.
Well, it's, it's meant to, um, because of, we're now rotating Saturdays.
Yeah, that's bad.
And it takes away, like, we are losing a staff person in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
If someone, it runs into, we try to work around each other's schedule as best as we can. But, um it's, it's, there's not a lot of room for, uh so.
So do you need a vote? And so those are, if I heard you correctly, there are two things. One is increasing hours of one of the staff. And then the others, the substitute staff, are those the only other?
And then, um, the budget in general.
But the budget in general is level funded, right? Is that?
Um, down here, I, I did, um I moved around items in the budget so that it would maximize our, um obligation for library materials, the books and magazines that we have to maintain. So I did a lot of shifting around and looking at what we're spending now and so that, that's pretty much down here, um so but I, I still have, um no, I don't know what that, I, I can't see, I thought I made it so that we were at zero here, so I can go back and fix it, but I don't think.
Joseph, I have a question. The substitute, is that like a new position, where you would have someone like be a substitute? Okay.
It's completely
Yeah. Is there some kind of like a pool for like area libraries that they have substitute library people? Or I'm just thinking about schools, like if there's like a setup for like maybe local libraries, or is it like poorer library?
I think there's not really a pool, um
I was just curious, I was just curious.
But those positions tend to be filled by, um, other staff people in, in neighboring libraries, if they're looking for extra hours, or
I was wondering, yeah, I was always thinking something like that.
Word librarians.
Yeah, it's not like a set, they don't even know when they'll ever get called, so.
Right, right.
So would this be one person, or just you would, on an ad hoc basis, just put it out there and?
I think because it's new, maybe just start with one person, to see if that maintains the need. If that and when, I mean, I can check to see how other libraries do it, um maybe having a couple of people in place.
Somebody's not available, yeah.
But, I mean, it's a hard sell, because it's not guaranteed work, right?
Yeah, and somebody who's doing that is probably has other commitments, and if you can't get that person
Right.
So might be, and you, you don't want a situation where somebody is effectively on call. So you might want to have, want to have like a pool, our own pool of two or three people, perhaps, that's a good point, I know, or, but you're saying that these oftentimes are drawn from other libraries that have part-time staff.
But, but, so I can see what other libraries do, and that
Yeah, okay, I, I think the, the main thing, you need to submit this for January thirty-first, there's still plenty of time for discussion and you know, sorting it out, the details operationally, but the, it's, they're requesting
It's just putting a dollar on it to get started.
Yeah, I think, I personally think we should vote it within
You want a hundred hours?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because it's going to move, move around in the town before it's final, anyway.
Right.
And we're, we're getting some of the operational parts of it, but that may not need to be defined right now in terms of
Right.
this next step, which is, just we want money for the purpose of doing this, and we'll operationalize it later. Yeah. I think it's, it's been socially fine, and financially, I think it's feasible, so.
So that's my proposal, um I will go back and rework that number to reflect the ten
Yeah.
hours. Not ten, a hundred hours, excuse me.
Okay.
And I'd like to find out, I, my intent is that this is zero, but in the expense line, that we are level funded. But I might have increased the, I, I, that six hundred twenty-six dollars might be in the open magazine line, the library materials, to raise our percentage up.
Sure.
So I just want to verify that, but
Okay.
It's also pretty insignificant, it's not even one percent of an increase, so.
Okay.
Um, I did email, we, we were asked to contact, to submit this, like any salary sort of things to the town administrator and town accountant. So I've already done that, and let them know that the board will be reviewing this in January as well.
Okay. So you need a vote from us tonight on this?
For a few, yeah, a few.
To the board, sure, yeah, all right. Um, so why, why don't we start with a motion, we can come back to any discussion if needed. So I can have a motion to approve the budget as proposed by library director.
Uh, Rita, I make a motion that we approve the budget proposed by the library director.
Motion from Rita Russo.
I second.
Second, Eve Cabral.
Okay.
Okay, um, any discussion on the motion? Yeah, we, I think we already have the motion, so.
I think we probably need to sign it, um, at some point. If this motion carries, then I will need your signatures as well.
Before January thirty-first?
Before January thirty-first, so.
All right. Um
What I do.
We'll put it to a vote then. Eve?
Uh, I vote, yes, approve, yes.
Okay, Eve Cabral, I. Rita?
Uh, Rita Russo, I.
Ronald Connor, I. The motion passes. Okay, thank you for your work on that, Jocelyn.
Um, could you, um, make a separate vote for the substitute staff?
Yeah, if that's not incorporated.
Just because it's a new, a new thing.
All right, sure.
I think, I know it, it's included in the overall budget, so it's implied, but I just want to be clear.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you, for mentioning that. Um, okay, so we now need a motion to approve the the recommendation to add a substitute the recommendation to add a substitute librarian position. Uh, this part of
The position, Eve Cabral.
Eve Cabral, motion second.
Rita Russo, aye, second.
Goodbye Rita. Any discussion? Okay, well, put it to a vote. Uh, Rita?
Uh, yes, aye.
Okay. Ronald Connor, aye. Okay, the motion passes. Do we need to have the hundred hours? Or that's in the budget, right? We just want to create the position. Yeah, because, yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to have a motion with the hours, because next year, we might say we need somebody for a hundred and fifty, whatever. I think it's a great idea, so let's see where it goes.
Okay.
Alright. I see nothing else on the agenda, is there anything else?
There's questions and input and
Oh, oh, sorry, to jump right over. Uh, Mr. Point who's sat patiently through all of this, so, uh, welcome Zach, Zach Lapointe from the Friends. Do you have any questions, input or updates from the Friends?
I have no questions, I have no, um, questions or anything. Can everybody hear me, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm working with a new laptop here, so I don't know what's working and what's not. Um, I do have some updates to share with you guys, um. The first thing, I guess I'll start off with some good news. We had two very successful fundraisers that we just did. As you guys know, during the month of November, we did the gift card fundraiser again. And this was our best year yet with it. We did twelve thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars in sales. And we profited six hundred and fourteen dollars. Of it, so that was a very good, um, profit this year. This is our best year yet, and we've been running this since two thousand seventeen. And I just found out today, um, for the last several years, we participated in the Festival of Trees at Arujo Farms. And we made nine hundred and nine dollars off of the Festival of Trees. That is another one that is our best year yet with that. So we are doing really well, um. Money-wise, we're doing well overall. Um, at our last meeting, we voted to renew all of our current passes, except the Old Sturbridge Village Pass due to lack of use. And we also added the Museum of Fine Arts Pass. Um, one of the things that'll be down, coming up on the horizon for us with the town election coming up, is I'm gonna start looking to plan candidates night. Um, that'll be coming. And then one of the other things we're doing, I don't know if you guys have been kept in the loop on it or not, is we're gonna be starting a video project in regards to advocacy. Um, Jocelyn, can I share my, can you give me permission to share my screen?
Let me find you here. You got it?
Yes, thank you. Alright, so one of the things we're gonna be doing is a, um, we're gonna be creating a video for advocacy, uh, advocating for the library and what the library, um, is currently going through. We're gonna be using a program called Memento, which is something, um, my vice chair Karen Gannon uses with her, um, mentoring courses through Gordon College. She, uh, it's a very popular program, I guess. So this is what, this is the basis of what we're doing. So we're looking for um, people to record as part of the video. And we're looking for, uh, feedback from adults, teenagers and children about any of the following. Um, looking for how useful the library is to you. Um, what programs have you enjoyed that are sponsored by the library? Have you been to the new library space? What do you think of them? Uh, what else is important that you would like to add about the library and its use to you? Um, this is just some ideas to get people started. They certainly can add more to what they record, and they can also add less. Um, we'll be starting this rather shortly, and we are asking that videos be recorded by January thirty-first. So, um, that's what we're up to. This is a new project for us, and we're hoping that this comes out well. This is our first time trying something like this. Um, other than that, we did donate, um, as you all are well aware, um, one of the staff members at the library had a very tragic loss at the beginning of October. And we did donate, um, a whole selection of children's books in, um, her son's memory. So that was something that we, um, also did. But that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Zach, it's Rita, I have a question. If someone wants to make a video, but they don't have the capability, do you, somebody, is there somebody that will help them do that?
Um, we can certainly make the effort to try to help them, sure.
Exactly.
Oh, so there, there's, there's no studio involved in doing this? People are just making it on their own?
Yep, you can record it on your laptops, on your phones, whatever you have that you can do, you can record with, you can do it wherever, as long as the device has internet capability, because you are uploading it to a secure link.
Got it. And so is there release involved at, at all? Are there, is there? I'm not, I'm not trying to get involved in the Friends, the Friends business, I'm just, just more curious that are advisory, will people need to sign a release on this, or?
No, as you see right here, I know you probably can't see it where you, you are, Ron. Right in the direction sheet, it says that we are assuming that if you're in the video, that you give permission for you, um, your segment to be shown publicly.
But
There's a big disclaimer right there.
Will it be unedited then, that the Friends will just take it as, as submitted?
Ki- Karen has the administrative capabilities on Memento, she's the one that's gonna be coordinating all of this. And on Memento, she has the ability to, um, edit the order of the videos, uh, what videos go first or what go last, like where you are placed in the video. And one of the things we can also do is, especially if we get, um, negativity, we can, um, exclude that from the video as well.
Sounds like a wonderful question. No, it sounds great, thank you. Thanks for all that the Friends are doing. That's, that's a pretty pretty amazing report. Do you, yeah, so this is just a total aside, is, because I never asked the question before, but do the Friends do an annual report, even just like a one-page, this is our achievements for the year, because it sounds like you're doing an amazing amount of work. And I've just never seen it before, but
In the, in the thirteen years that I've been doing this, we have not done that, but I can cert- we can certainly start doing that.
It's just such impressive work, it wouldn't hurt to have a, so it's just my suggestion again, that
Sure. No, I, I, I appreciate all of your suggestions, whatever you have.
Either the things that you just talked about, the fundraisers and, you know, the, the, um, the library passes and this Memento project, it's, you know, it's very impressive the work that you do. It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be a long thing, it'd just be like one page. Yeah, because I, I, I appreciate it, I don't, I don't think patrons realize how much you do.
I think that's true.
So, toot your horn, I guess that's what I'm saying. You are doing great work, and, and, you know, certainly very much appreciated, Zach.
I, I have, I have thoughts on that, Zach, for
Yeah.
Yeah, as a recruitment tool and maybe making it more infographic.
Yeah, that's something we can do, sure.
If, um, and we can talk about it when you, you or Karen or whoever has time.
I'm very happy
That's certainly an option.
I'm very happy to hear that you've added the MFA pass. So, alright, do you have anything else, Zach?
No, that's it, unless you guys have anything, any other questions for me.
Eva, Rita?
No, I just say they do a great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate them.
Yes. Um, okay, any other, anything else on the agenda?
I'm trying to schedule some virtual programs, just spread out a little bit, but that's it.
Okay. Alright, well, everybody be safe in the storm tomorrow. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
It's Rita Russo, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
You have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Ronald Connor, aye.
Rita Russo, aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Recording stuff, thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.